Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, March 11. If you are watching live on Monday, March 11, we encourage you to call in with comments or questions. Our caller number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch live on PCTV76.org or on Optimum or Verizon Cable TV. And within a few days you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this and any past meetings at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is in two weeks on Monday, March 25 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00. But we are in budget season and therefore are having budget work sessions as well in addition to our regular meetings. Had a bunch of announcements to make. The first is to remind folks that there is a village election coming up on March 19. The only office that is up for election this year is Village Justice, but you are entitled and encouraged to vote in that election on March 19. Noreen, can you report the polling places?
The village is going to have a total of three locations. We have six election districts, and they'll be covered between the three. Districts 31 and 43 will be at Emmanuel Lutheran Church, District 15 at the Hayes Hoes Firehouse up on Bedford Road, and districts 20, 13, and 14 will be at our own rec department, 48 Marble. The county does run the election, so our request to have all the districts at one location was overridden by them. They actually would prefer the multiple sites because they do staff it and bring in the appropriate number of machines per district, not towards expect to turn out. So once again, last year was the first year we did not have the village election here at Village Hall. So we will have the link on our website, and please feel free to call me at the Village Hall, and we'll help you find your right location. We're hoping that with this election we have found the home for each of the sites. Last year, one location was not available, the American Legion, so there was an adjustment this year, and that one will be voting at the rec department.
Okay, so Pleasantville-NY.gov, we'll put that up on the front page. Again, the election is on March 19, and the sole office in play is the election or reelection of the Village Justice. So as Noreen offered, if you have confusion or comments or questions, you can call her at 769-1975. Just to follow on to her comments, we, like most communities in Westchester, have now handed over the administration of our elections to the County Board of Elections. A whole series of rules and regs, the new equipment, the requirement to print the ballots that are used for the automatic readers and the like, all led the Village of Pleasantville, like most of our colleague municipalities, to hand over the responsibility for the administration to the County Board of Elections. But as Noreen already mentioned, some of the rules are oddly rigid, including the fact that we will have three fully-staffed polling places for an election that is not particularly likely to generate too much activity, which is not, I want to hasten to point out, a suggestion that you shouldn't vote because everyone should vote. So, couple other things to note. As many of you have noticed, the owner of 70 Memorial Plaza, the former building on the Rock, as we've called it, next to the post office, is well along in the process of taking down the rock that has stood next to the post office for all these many years. He has a demolition permit to bring that site down to grade. The project that he proposes to build there, which is a four-story building with apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor, and retail on the first floor, and roughly 140 underground parking spaces, is before the planning commission right now, and he won't have a permit to build that until they complete the planning commission process. So that's the status of that. A bunch of other people have also asked me about the status of Key Food. I don't know if you have noticed, but they have built a new entrance at the center of the building and expect soon to open that. I have framed out in addition on the back of the building that you can see from our parking lot behind the post office. So significant progress ahead, leading towards a full renovation of that store, which is certainly good news for the Village of Pleasantville. I want to remind everybody to mark their calendars. Pleasantville Day is on Saturday, May 18. Enrollment is already signing up now for in organizations that want to have a booth. Maybe it's already happened. So mark your calendars, Saturday, May 18, and a shout-out to Peter Rogavin, Petrozorim, and Ben Sarabin, who are the three ringleaders in a bigger committee that organized that on behalf of the village. Farm market continues in the middle school until April 6. I'm sorry, until March 30. The last indoor market at the Pleasantville Middle School is March 30, and then opening day outside is April 6. It won't be until Memorial Day that they have the full spectrum of vendors and activities that people come to expect in the warm weather. But last indoor market, March 30, first outdoor market, April 6, and a shout-out again to the Pleasantville School District for making possible the indoor market in the cafeteria of the middle school. Comments, questions, reports from others in the announcement category? All right.
I do have one other announcement, and that is the Pleasantville Music Festival Tent City Sales will be Saturday, March 30. They will be held this year here at Village Hall because the rec department has camp registration. The doors will open at 8:00 a.m. So again, the Tent City Sale, Saturday, March 30, here at Village Hall.
Okay, and they sell fast, so if you're interested, act quickly. And then just to remind everybody, the music festival itself is on Saturday, July 13. You can find more information at PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. And then the last thing that was on my list is folks who are part of our community aggregation energy program through Sustainable Westchester will have received a probably somewhat confusing letter that looks like this on the description of the sources and air emissions used to generate your electricity. If you're interested in more detail on this, we encourage you to go to westchesterpower.org. That is the website for Sustainable Westchester's program. The reason you're getting this is that we have recently renewed, as many other communities have, our participation in this aggregated buying program that gets favorable rates for everyone who participates. And Pleasantville opted in to an all-renewable power supply, and so Constellation, as is required, sends out this letter. I do wish they had said a little more about it than they did. And then also in the category of your electric service, everyone, whether you're involved in the community aggregation program, which most of us are or not, the delivery and billing of your electricity still happens through ConEdison, and most folks will have received this postcard. Smart meters are coming. Your neighborhood is going to get new state-of-the-art meters in a few months, and that smart meter provides a lot more data, both back to ConEd that allows faster restoration and activation of accounts, but also a bunch more information for homeowners that they will be able to see high bill alerts and better able to manage their costs. And smart meters also will make it easier to integrate solar into your power supply if you have chosen to do that in your home. So raft of paper arriving on behalf of our utility providers. All right, anything else on that?
I just wanted to add that I will post these updates on Facebook as well, and that we are working on sort of further extending our communications, in part because we've noticed that there are a lot of discussions going on informally on various Facebook pages and person-to-person. And so we have a number of initiatives that we're working on throughout the spring to deliver more information. So I would encourage you to join the Facebook page. If you're on Facebook and have not yet joined, there's a link on the upper right-hand corner of the village website. And we're happy to take questions on the page as well that we can try and address in a kind of community format.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Nicole, for spearheading our management of all of that at the moment. I just want to point out also that if you are wanting to interact directly with the village, you need to do it on the village Facebook page, although various members of the board and the administration may be aware of what goes on on Monza Pleasantville, or you know you're from Pleasantville, or all these other sites that are out there. The place to say something that you want us or your administration to see is on Pleasantville's own Facebook page.
Correct.
All right. With that, we go to the resolutions, number 42, Nicole.
Whereas the village proposes to construct the Manville Road Corridor Improvement and Civic Space Project consisting of pedestrian enhancements along Manville Road to be partially funded by a federal grant administered by the New York State Department of Transportation, and the creation of a civic space pocket park at the intersection of Memorial Plaza and Manville Road, which will be referred to as the Proposed Action. And whereas on October 23, 2017, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to Part 617.6 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, declared their intent to be lead agency with respect to the proposed action. And whereas the notice of intent to declare lead agency and the full environmental assessment form, Part 1, were circulated to all involved agencies with no objection. And whereas the proposed action was classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, and the Village Board of Trustees formally declared itself lead agency with respect to the proposed action. And whereas the environmental assessment forms, Part 1, 2, and 3 attached here, too, were prepared and reviewed by the Village Board of Trustees. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has reviewed other analyses, information, and documents submitted to the board relating to its determination of environmental significance under SECRE. And whereas duly-advertised public hearings were held on January 14th, 28th, February -- sorry, January 14th, January 28th, February 11th, and February 25th of the year 2019, and formerly closed. Now therefore be it resolved that after due discussion, deliberation, and review of the relevant areas of environmental concern based on the environmental assessment form and all other information submitted to the village board during its review of the proposed action, the Village Board of Trustees hereby adopts the annexed negative declaration of environmental significance pursuant to SECRE and set forth in the EAF Part 3 for the reasons stated therein, having determined that the Manville Road Corridor Improvement and Civic Space Projects will not result in any potential significant adverse environmental impacts. Thus, no environmental impact statement. EIS needs to be prepared, and the SECRE review of the proposed action is hereby complete.
Is there a second?
Second.
So appended to this in the agenda and in the public record are the following attachments: An overview presentation by me from January 14; a presentation by Wagner Hodgson Landscape Architects on the Civic Space Design from January 14; the Hudson Valley Engineering Associates Traffic Study, both the appendices and the final; the proposed Memorial Plaza Parking Lot redesign; a traffic study peer review memo from F.P. Clark Planners; the site plan for Manville Road divided into Site Plan 1 and Site Plan 2; the environmental assessment forms, Part 1, 2, and 3; the narrative related to the environmental assessment form, Part 3; a parking analysis performed by our consultant planners, B.F.J. Planning; an HVEA, Southern Valley Engineering Memo regarding queuing lengths at the East Mount Approach to Wheeler; and an accident analysis for the Manville Road Corridor. That amounts to about 315 pages of material. And if any part of that is of interest to you, you can download it at our Agenda, Site, Novus Agenda. If you click into this meeting in our agendas on Pleasantville-NY.gov and have 34 megabytes of space, you're willing to devote to it. It's a worthwhile document to download. All kinds of detail that probably is more than most people would want, but included in this package are the design drawings for both Manville Road and for the Civic Space, as well as some other material I think folks would find to be of interest. So let me just be clear. As we said when we closed the public hearing, which continued on for three meetings, when we closed it at the last meeting, the conclusion of this process is to conclude the SECRE process. That's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And if we vote and approve to adopt this negative declaration, it means we have completed that process. It doesn't mean that we have completed the process of deciding exactly what to do. And if we were to make changes in either of these two projects, the Manville Road project or the Civic Space project, that reduced their impacts, we wouldn't need to reopen this. And in the event that we were to do something that expanded their impacts, we would need to reopen it. I think that is massively unlikely. So I just don't want people to be confused. What we're voting on tonight is to complete the Environmental Quality Review Act process, not to finalize the project we undertake to do. Any comments, questions?
I have a comment, and before my comment, I have a motion to amend the language in the resolution itself to take out the word "potential," where in the seventh line of that paragraph, it says, "Manville Road Corridor Improvement and Civic Space Projects Will Not Result In Any Potential Significant Adverse Environmental Impacts." I'd make a motion to amend, to remove the word "potential" from there because if you read the language of the negative declaration itself, which I'm just going to pull up right now, just give me a moment. It's Part 3 of the environmental assessment form. The box that's checked says, if we vote for this, "This project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore an environmental impact statement is not to be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued." So I just think it's better to mimic. The word "potential," I think, throws some
Doubt.
Cloud into what we mean. And what we mean is, if we adopt this, we're adopting that negative declaration.
So is there a second for the proposed change?
Second.
And do you guys see that as an issue, beneficial change?
Yeah, this was drafted by Keenan Bean. I don't see a problem taking it.
It's just a word, but I read it and I thought--
All right. Is there a vote to accept the -- well, is there a vote to accept -- to vote on Resolution Number 42, the neg-dec for this project as amended?
So then I have a comment.
Yes.
I had a comment. I just wanted to say that, you know, I myself, and I know my colleagues have taken a very hard look at all of this material, in particular, my focus has been on traffic and parking, which I consider to be significant environmental issues. I don't think too many people raised things like drainage or noise and things like that, but most of the environmental discussion during the course of the public hearings, and there were a lot of other things discussed as well, and I'm glad those things were discussed because it gives us insight into what our community is looking for. But as far as environment is concerned, there's the parking and the traffic, and I paid particularly close attention to the HVEA studies and the peer reviews. Also listened closely, particularly to former Mayor Bernie Gordon, who had some very good questions and insights into what he thought might be some issues. And we gave him back some responses through the engineers that we used. And I really believe that the impact in intersections, that this project is really not going to negatively impact the flow of traffic at those intersections. In a lot of ways, it's going to improve pedestrian mobility. I do believe it's going to improve dramatically the merge of cars coming in what is now the slip lane and the north end of Memorial Plaza onto Manville Road, which I consider now to be a pretty hazardous merge. Well, all these cars are coming together, and especially if you're trying to cross the street, a pedestrian at the same time can be dangerous. So I think we're making a -- if we do this project as it's drawn up now, there'll be some significant environmental improvements, and I really don't think there are going to be any negative impacts at those intersections. And as far as parking is concerned, I have the unique -- in addition to reading all those studies, I have the unique circumstance of having an office that overlooks the train tracks out to Memorial Plaza directly on the gazebo. And I will tell you, I've been making observations every day for the past three months, and every single day, Memorial Plaza is 10 cars empty, 15 cars empty, 20, up to 25, and more empty spaces all morning long. And I know we oversell that lot, but the lot is underutilized by permit holders. There's no problem getting a spot there any day of the week if you have a permit. So the number of spaces necessary for permit holders is not as many as we have right now. I think that adding this lot, this civic space, and I know it's right now on the drawing board calling for losing 43, I think it is, the number of parking spaces. There are regularly 20 or 25 empty parking spaces during the morning hours when there should only be permit parking holders. And if we reconfigure our parking or reevaluate our parking plan and encourage some folks to take permits in other lots through pricing, that we're not going to have any problem finding appropriate places for anybody who wants to have a permit, and those that really want to be in Memorial Plaza, there will be a space for them. So I feel really comfortable about the fact that this project will not have negative environmental impacts on traffic and parking, both from the study standpoint, and the reading all this material and hearing what everybody has to say, and from my own observations. So that's mine.
And just one thing to add to that. One of the latest arriving pieces of information was the accident report analysis. And I do want to point out there are a couple of people who've had concerns, had various different concerns, but one of them has been about wanting to retain the slip lane, and that most directly affects the safety of the Manville Road Corridor. And the analysis actually showed that that piece of land has four times the state average accident rate. So it's quite a dangerous intersection, and we prove that now. And that is one of the things that this is going to hopefully help to improve.
I wanted to add one thing.
Sure.
So I also looked a lot at this and was worried about the traffic and the parking. And I wanted to make just two quick clarifications. And one is that the SECRE process and the negative declaration that we are -- that's before us, that we may vote on, relates to two things that I think is important to clarify, because when we read this and we go, it will not, you know, have a potentially significant environmental impact. What we're talking about is, is it going to cause a problem that may not be there already? There is already traffic queuing in certain lights, and we know that already, and that's part of what we're going to look at as we go forward to understand how to change light cycles and things like that with the New York State Department of Transportation, but that problem exists already. So this project, what we've got before us, is not the causal agent of that problem. It's already there. And then the second thing I just wanted to clarify, because I needed it clarified, is that these are impacts that are not otherwise mitigated. As Joe was just explaining, there may be an impact. Clearly, if you change a thing, there will be an impact to it, but we done the homework to make sure that those impacts have been properly mitigated. So when you're looking at this resolution before us, and however we vote on it, just please look at it through the prism of those two things, because I don't think that's always that clear when you're looking at SECRE. Thank you.
Any further comments?
I don't have any comments specific to this negative declaration, but just to say that I know that there are a lot of people in the community who have a lot of questions about both of these projects, and we fully intend to try and communicate with people going forward, because this is just one step in the process. Again, you know, if you have specific questions, reach out to us, but this is something that we'll be posting about on Facebook and possibly on a new website as well. So as the process unfolds, we'll continue to try and provide as much useful information as we can.
And we're considering a whole range of options, including a town hall kind of a meeting. So let me just remind everybody, if you go to Pleasantville-NY.gov, on the front page, Citizen Action Center, there are 10 buttons in the left-hand column. Fourth one down is Agendas, and that brings you into the agendas for all of our boards and commissions. But you can search your way through to the agenda for today's meeting Monday, March 11, and download the attachment to this matter, and that will get you the 315 pages, which I think are, as I say, it's not the kind of thing you need to read in its entirety, but there are some sections I think that would be helpful for folks. So I encourage you to do that if it's of interest. So is there agreement that we will accept the proposed change to delete the word "potential," third line from the bottom?
Movers in the secondary, sure.
Civics Base Project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact as opposed to "potential." Is that acceptable to the mover in the secondary?
Yes.
Yes? All right. All in favor of Resolution 42 as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Now to smaller market items.
Dog licensing is very important.
All right. That's why it's yours.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees desires to transfer the duties of collection and processing of applications for dog licenses to the Town Clerk of the Town of Mount Pleasant. And whereas New York State Agricultural and Markets Law, Paragraph 109.1b, permits the Board of Trustees of any incorporated village in Westchester County by resolution to provide that applications for licenses shall no longer be made to the village clerk, but to the clerk of the town in which the village is situated. And whereas the Town of Mount Pleasant has no objections to accepting applications for dog licenses from the Village of Pleasantville's residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves that the applications for and processing of dog licenses for residents of the Village of Pleasantville shall be made to the Town Clerk for the Town of Mount Pleasant commencing on March 18, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Self-explanatory, I think.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 44, Joe.
Resolve that based upon the recommendations of the village assessor, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following small claims settlements. One, Hildreth Place, original assessment of $48,750, reduced to $40,500 for a total reduction in taxes of $766.50. 29 Grandview Avenue, original assessment $60,800, reduced to $56,300 for a total tax reduction of $418.09. 107 Bedford Road, original assessment $53,200, reduced to $52,400 for a total tax reduction of $74.31. 288 Bedford Road, original assessment of $101,100, reduced to $89,300 for a total tax reduction of $1,096.34. 60 Leland Avenue, original assessment of $78,200, reduced to $72,500 for a total tax reduction of $529.58. And 124 King Street, with original assessment of $42,900, reduced to the assessment of $37,400 for a total tax reduction of $511. I think those tax reductions are for the 2018 fiscal year, the current fiscal year?
Correct.
Current fiscal year. And then, of course, those new assessments are going to be applied going forward, so they'll have whatever taxes they have based on those.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Again, these are the result of a small claims challenge, and this is the recommendation of our village assessor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 45, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes from the village board meeting on February 25, 2019, attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 46, Nicole.
Resolve that the following budget amendments are hereby approved as listed below. In the General Fund, a transfer of $20,000 from Clinton Street Center part-time to Clinton Street Center Utilities. In the Revenues and Expense Water Fund, a transfer of $24,000 from water non-resident repair to water transmission outside service.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Steve, 47.
Resolve that the check register dated February 25, 2019, covering check numbers 92569 to 92684, is hereby approved as listed below from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Capital Fund, the Refuge Fund, and the Trust Fund, a total of $372,121.35.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the check register? I note that we're spending $16,000 on more road salt. Let the weather gods make sure we don't have to do that again this year.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 48, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following new hire appointment effective March 8, 2019. Michelle Sakaruto has a recreation assistant part-time available at $65 per hour under the rec department program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Filling an open slot.
She's actually been paid as a consultant, so we're bringing her on to payroll.
Okay.
For IRS.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 49, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves--
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the release of the product, project retainage associated with the Water Main Extension Project to Landscape Unlimited Incorporated in the amount of $32,511.30 memo attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Backed up by a memo from Jeff Adconham, our superintendent of public works, this is the release of the retainage for the 12-inch Water Main Extension that we did on Broadway between church and lake. Is there...
Which worked very well.
It did, yes.
It was a big problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, that being the last of our regular agenda. Any new business, new comments, new reports?
Yeah, it was just brought to my attention that the check register in Resolution 2019-47 dated March 11th for today, not the February 25th.
Oh, good, did I read the February 25th?
Yeah. Okay, so the mover, who is the mover on that?
I read it.
Steve.
Yeah, Steve, so.
And Nicole.
Mover and secondor approve the correction of that date from February 25th to March 11th.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Thank you.
Mary, eagle eye.
I just read it. What do you think, I know what I read?
He said March 11th, 1911.
Twenty-five.
Go Robin, yes. All right, then we are going to return to work session, and thereafter, a brief executive session, so is there a motion to return to work session followed by an executive session regarding matters of personnel?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Thank you all, appreciate your time. Welcome to our new reporter from the Examiner.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Delighted to have you here. See you all in two weeks on March 25th.